Number first, this is a Moscow City Council meeting. And you will have to put up with a raspy voice from me. I usually talk louder than this. I'm trying to talk sauce, so my voice will carry me through the entire meeting. So if somebody has a hard time hearing me, please speak up and I'll be more than happy to have somebody else up here repeat what I just said. How's that? With that, I'm going to start with Dan.
May I please join with for the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Thank you, Dan. With that, I will move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, Walter made a motion to approve the consent agenda with Tom's second motion. I'll start to roll with John.
Aye.
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 We will move on. Very good. Next order of business is a couple of proclamations, and I will do my best at reading these folks. And the first one is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, whereas Congress has designated December 7th as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, and whereas that date is set aside each year in solemn recognition of the events at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii in 1941, when America was attacked by military forces of Imperial Japan, and whereas this year marks the 73rd anniversary of that event that led America's involvement in World War II, and whereas more than 2,400 people perished and more than 1,100 were wounded in that attack, whereas of approximately 1.2 million US veterans from World War II who are still alive and about 6,600 live in Idaho, and whereas we wish to honor the brave men and women who served in that war and to reflect on the sacrifices of so many others who shared their devotion to duty and freedom, and whereas the city of Moscow will recognize occasion by flying the flag of the United States at half-staff until sunset on that date in reverence for those who died protecting the freedoms that we enjoy today. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, Mayor of the city of Moscow, call upon the residents of our community to join us in a moment of silence to honor those who died at Pearl Harbor in the service to our country. My second proclamation is food drive. Whereas Rick Minari, President of the nonprofit organization Police Cares participated in the ongoing meeting series Poverty on a Police hosted by the city of Moscow, and whereas agencies and networks around the police continue to work to provide those in need, and whereas a comprehensive study of poverty by Moscow Legal Women Voters in 2012 identified food insecurity as a significant problem in our area, and whereas on the average more than 30% of the Moscow students are eligible for free and reduced-price federal-funded meal benefits, and in some schools that figure is more than 50%, and whereas state and federal programs that previously helped fill some of the voids that we've seen program budgets and staffing diminished, and great pressure placed on those local community members to find solutions, and whereas in response to such unselling circumstances, Rick suggested holding a local food drive to inspire a large national event, and as whereas it is reasonable that Rick's dream to have the first Saturday in December be National Food Drive Day can begin in Moscow, whereas in 2013 Police Cares helped eight communities in Leitau County with food, toiletries, financial support, including donating 20,000 pounds to the city of Moscow food banks. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, Mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim Saturday, December 6th, 2014 as Food Drive Day. Rick, are you here, sir?
Rick is not.
Or is there somebody else? Don, okay.
We appreciate the opportunity to come in front of the city council and let them know we appreciate the proclamation. This is our ninth event, annual event here in Moscow. We've increased our number of cities that we're working with in Leitau and Whitman County up to 11 this year. We hope to make this obviously the biggest food, it is the biggest food drive in Moscow and Pullman, and we hope to make it the biggest one in Whitman and Leitau County. There's a need out there. We feel like that need is something that we can help with, and so that's why we're involved in doing what we're doing. I would like to personally invite Bill and everyone in the room to come to our event on Saturday, December 6th, this coming Saturday. We have the food drive with hopefully what will turn out to be thousands of volunteers blanketing the communities and collecting food, and then we have the live and silent auctions that start at 11:00 in Moscow and Pullman, and that money also goes back to benefit the food banks and local children and charities. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, for the work that your group and your organization does. It's a very needy thing. And folks in Moscow, we all know that's wonderful and very warm about doing these sort of things. So thank you very much for all the work you guys do.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Don.
Mayoral appointment. I have four appointments that I would like to read off to the council here. Krista Creighton, Historic Preservation Committee, with a term that would end the 31st of December 2015. That's a college seat. Kristen Holtenner, Human Rights Commission, and that term would expire December 31st of 2016. Ava Nona Isaacson, Sustainable Environment Commission, and that would expire on December 31st of 2017. That's a county non-voting seat. And Ben Calabretta, Transportation Commission, with an expiration of December 31st of 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the slate of appointees.
Okay. We got a motion by Big Dan and a second by John Weber to approve the appointees. I'll start to roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. And I know we've got a couple of the folks here. We've got Dan Calabretta, and we also have Kristen. Would you like, please stand up so we can recognize you. Thank you very much. Oh, and Kristen. I'm sorry. And Krista Creighton, back there in the back.
I'm Ava.
Ava, okay. I'm sorry. I'm not good at this sort of thing. Thank you so much. I got to share with you my work years ago when I started on planning and zoning, and we need lots of good local volunteers in our community to serve and join, and it's very nice. And as the mayor of this town, I certainly appreciate it, and the folks that are up here sitting at this table have been on commissions as well, and so we appreciate the work and the time that you take away from your families to do the good things for our community. So thank you very much. Okay. Now, public comment, mayor's response period is right now. Anybody can get up and speak to us if they wish for a few minutes. If you come up front, state your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind as long as it's not on tonight's agenda or something that's before the Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zoning. I see nobody rushing forward, so we will move on, folks. Number five, Citizen Commission Report for Affordable Housing. We got Becky Couch. Becky, you have the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Tonight, once again, we have our Chair of the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, Jill Maxwell, here to provide a brief report on the commission's activities and projects for this past year, and then touch on some upcoming items that they'll be working on. So I'm happy to be here tonight to introduce you to Jill.
Hello, Mayor Lambert and council members. Happy to be here again. Just to begin with, I'd like to just go, let's name our members and actually point out Julia Nakana was Vice Chair, but she, November was, October was her last meeting. November was her last meeting? We are in November. November was her last meeting, and she's moved to Kansas, so we will need a replacement. And then Kendra Rathbone is our Secretary, Jamelle Lixit, Patrick Johnson, Randy Bockhold, Jeffrey Dodge. Lori Bonner and Clayton McFarland are brand-new appointees who have just joined us. So we're nearly full, which is great. It's been a while. And also thanks to Rebecca for just doing a wonderful job, including preparing most of this presentation, and to Michael for filling in for her when she was out. Our past projects and accomplishments. 2003, we completed an analysis of impediments to fair housing and wrote an action plan which helped us secure a CDBG grant to improve Friendship Square. We completed in about 2000, 2010 maybe, the process of forming the Community Housing Development Organization, the CHODO, and the Community Land Trust, which is continuing to develop and to grow, and its goal is to provide single-family, affordable single-family housing in Moscow. Last year, we reviewed the draft environmental impact statement for Highway 95 realignment, and we voted to write a letter to the council stating our concerns about possible impacts to low-income housing with the preferred route. And we have, last year, we worked with the Human Rights Commission to develop recommendations for wordings on sexual orientation and gender identity ordinance. So ongoing projects right now, we continue to sponsor an annual fair housing workshop with featured speakers. We're currently working to line up the next workshop in the spring. Possible dates are March, April, or May, so we'll get that lined up. Each year, we make available to, this Fair Housing Act Design Annual, we make this available to graduating architecture students. We provide the funding for that. We also, for people who want a copy, and for people who just want an electronic copy, that's also available. Let's see, we promote April National Fair Housing Month activities, just to promote awareness of fair housing. This year, we are in the process of updating that 2003 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing and to create a Fair Housing Action Plan, and we are working on a variety of issues around tenant and landlord rights and responsibilities, which is kind of a new direction for us. The Analysis of Impediments project, it's a review of impediments or barriers that affect the rights, that affect people's choices around fair housing, and it refers to both public and private policies, practices, and procedures that can affect housing choices. Impediments to fair housing are defined as any actions or emissions or decisions that restrict or could restrict the availability of housing choices based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And this AI that we're working on will serve as the basis for fair housing planning. It'll provide information to policymakers, staff, housing providers, lenders, and fair housing advocates, and it will help build public support for fair housing efforts in the city. So our status right now is, again, that most recent one was completed in 2003. They're supposed to be updated about every 10 years. We contracted last year with the University of Idaho Geography Department to develop that, to get their assistance in the survey development and analysis. That survey was conducted in the spring of this year, and we have received a preliminary report on the results, and we will be getting, we'll be reviewing the compiled results and drafting the updated analysis, which you should have out next year. That's the plan. So regarding our activities with tenant and landlord rights and responsibilities, this project began as a discussion about issues surrounding renters' rights, most particularly with security deposits and the appeal process for move-out charges and general discontent among renters. To begin with, we met with a few landlords to gain their perspective about the issues. We did kind of a literature search in a way, just looking for information we could find about the laws in Idaho, how they pertain to landlord rights and responsibilities, and we compiled a lot of that information into a website, and we developed some resources for renters and landlords, which are all online. One of the things, some of the things that we developed and then handed out at this workshop that we did were these two brochures. One is on landlord rights and responsibilities, and the other is on tenant rights and responsibilities. It includes information about, you know, what you can, what you can and can't do, what some common violations are, what to do if your landlord wants to evict you, or what to do if you need to evict or increase like a tenant's rent or something. So just some general information and materials for people. So, and then, we're going to continue this work. We're actively collaborating with the University of Idaho students through ASUI and the Legal Aid Clinic. We plan on hosting some workshops on campus in January and February, hopefully in time for, before students have to sign leases, just to provide information to them about some of their rights and responsibilities. And we are actively, we're continuing to try to get a student representative on our commission. We think that that would be a really positive thing. So here's, just so you can see it better, this is an example of the landlord's rights and responsibilities, and this was put together by a UI student, as I think, for an extra-credit project. And we made the, these are available in the stands out here. We put them at the public library. We handed them out. We had a, we worked with the Human Rights Commission and had a social justice forum on fair and affordable housing here in September. We had, what, maybe 40 people, I think, attend, and people asked a variety of questions. We had three panelists, Ken Fontz from the Human Rights Commission, we had a local landlord, I think we had somebody from the Legal Aid Clinic, and then a person from our commission facilitated. And I thought the turnout was pretty good. People asked some good questions. And then, again, we put a lot of resources on our website, just to make it, you know, a resource for people who might have questions. And that is about it.
Well, thank you, Jill, for the nice commission report on fair and affordable housing. Tom, you're the liaison to fair and affordable housing.
I am. It's a, it's a great group. Lot of hard work that's happening there. It was interesting to get the early results from that study that came out, and I look forward to seeing that develop as they prepare the final report on that.
Right.
I was at the county courthouse today, and Michelle Fuzen, surprising. Michelle Fuzen was making a presentation to the county commissioners about the analysis of impediments for affordable housing for the county as well, and it might be worth just having a conversation.
Right.
Just to share ideas or compare notes or something like that.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Art, you have a comment?
Oh, I had a couple. Is the website linked in through the city? Through the commission's chunk of the city's website?
Yes.
Okay. The other one is, who determines the criteria for the impediments to fair housing? The checklist that you had up there? Is that something that comes down from the state? Is that something that's developed internal to the city?
It's something that, that we, that the current survey is inheriting from the previous survey.
Because I was wondering.
Probably it's state, there must be state or federal definitions that...
So I was wondering, yeah, where did it come from? Because if it was developed by the city, given the commission's support for the gender identity, sexual preference aspect, should that be in there too? Or is that something that the city can't do by themselves?
I think fair housing is, I would guess that it's a federal definition, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Thanks.
You know? The gender identity we added.
From the city's ordinance, we added those.
Okay, we need to have you back. You're going to have to talk into the microphone.
Just saying that we added the three or four ones that were from the city's ordinance, the discrimination ordinance.
But they're actually in there?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
The council has had a calm answer questions for Jill. Thank you very much for the nice report. Okay. We'll move on to item six, the 2014 Hamilton Lowell Aquatic Center Annual Report. Eric Newell, you have got the floor.
All right. Mayor, council, this is the opportunity that we get to give up and tell you about how great a summer we had at the Hamilton Aquatic Center. And so let's get started with that, all right? Over this presentation, I'll talk to you about a few things. We'll talk about some season highlights, the fee history, attendance information, temperatures, concessions, the pool rental revenue, swim lessons revenue, and then we'll also wrap it up by the expenses and expenditures and revenue, and give you how we did and looking forward to this next year, all right? And in the end, I promise there'll be opportunities for you to ask questions as well. So this, this year, the season highlights, we employed over 90 individuals at the pool. We're open, scheduled to be open 84 days, but with the school district, we were able to open an extra five days. We're actually open 89 days this year. We were closed for a total of 63 hours. That's up from about 20 hours from last year. We did have a warmer July, however, June and August were cooler, and so you'll see the numbers will reflect that. Hamilton Lowell, Howling and Hamilton had about 360 dogs this year, and we had about 125 kids participate in the youth triathlon at the end of the season. I do know that the adult triathlon, which is not run by the city, it fills up every single year as well. So it's a very heavily-used facility. This is our fees for the last, fee schedule for the last few years. As you can see, we did not change fees this year. We'll be looking at the rates this year as we get ready for budget this next season. So I anticipate some small raise in that to help offset our expenses as well. So here's our attendance. Total attendance this year was 54,384. Like I said, we were open 89 days, and then we were closed 63 hours. In relation, you can tell the last couple of years, we've had some pretty good closure, not as many hours, but in 2010 and 2009, we were up over 70 hours. So kind of in the middle range as usual. That 63 hours works out to approximately eight days of closure. You can see over the last 10 years, where that 54,384 falls into, we're right about where we normally are at. This is, I found this very interesting this year. June's temperature, like I said, was cooler by almost two degrees, or over two degrees. July was warmer, and then September and August was cooler by almost two degrees. We had a lot of days this year in the 71 to 79 range, and a lot of days in the 90-plus range. So not much in between. We had more cooler days and warmer days than we've had in a long time. So that's, that's a good thing. As you can tell, and as you would expect, colder days, we have less people show up. Warmer days, we have more people show up, and these are just the numbers, so you can see what we did this year. Everything from 103 people a day when we're really chilly, up to almost 1,000 when it's over 90 degrees. Concession revenue continues to go up. We're up to 42,233 this year. Our expenses were a little bit higher than last year. That was due to, every two years, we purchase our big squirts, and that's a big upfront expense, but to get the costs, I have to buy basically two years' worth ahead of time. So, and plus, when you have, when you're making more money, it costs a little bit of extra money as well, so. Swim lessons, or, sorry, pool rental revenue was up to $92,000, almost $9,300, about where it's been the last few years, except for 2012. Swim lessons, we had a really good swim lesson. This is the best swim lesson year we've had. We had 770 individuals participate in swim lessons, everything from our water safety instructor courses to our adoptive swim lessons, to private swim lessons, adult swim lessons. Lifeguarding class had 25 individuals this year, and then also our Aqua Zumba class is very, very popular. Water safety instructor class did not go this year because we didn't have it, but our revenue this year for swim lessons was up almost $5,000. So as you guys are aware, pool scholarships is a large part of our scholarships that are used. Last year was about $7,500. That was used for youth scholarships. This year, we're at $14,851. Swim lessons was $3,400, and I need to pull this real quick on my phone, I apologize, but that accounted for 59 individuals to participate in swim lessons, and then the $11,397 was for 190 individuals to participate in swimming throughout the summer. So that's what the breakdown of those two numbers are. So you have them. So total our revenue this year was $296,719. Our expenses were $334,987, which makes a net subsidy of $38,268. What I do want to do, you guys do, which I've done differently this year than the years past, I do want you to see that we do recover 88.6% of our expenses. Over the last 10 years, our average has been about 84.5%. This year, we are above our average at 88.6%. And so we do a really good job of covering the costs that are incurred by running the As you can see, just the revenues and expenses, our revenues keep going up, and in the same time, our expenses go up as well. Hopefully, we can get more revenue than expense. So in conclusion, we did see a slight decrease in attendance from last year. We did see season passes stay roughly the same. Our concession sales, excuse me, our concession sales continue to go up, and we do, did this year see a large increase in swim lessons attendance and revenue. So some, the additional expenses that were incurred this year by the, at the aquatic center, we replaced the old lockers, which were old and rusty, and that was a $3,100 expense. We purchased 40 new lounge chairs for about $4,000, and the inflatable fun run had been fixed, the last time it could be fixed. And so we used $8,400 of the Ross family money that was left to the city for the youth, and we replaced that, and we spent the extra $1,000, $1,200 out of capital or minor equipment as well. The 2015 projects, we've got some roof repairs that need to be done at the pool. Currently, we're having engineers work on that. The slides will be surfaced, and we're still in the process of getting that done, and hopefully we'll replace the frog slide. That's the plan. If, if the money is there, we're planning on replacing the frog slide with a mountain and a moose, and so the kids will really enjoy that. It had a wolf, but I thought in North Idaho, the wolf might get shot, so we didn't want that in Idaho. So looking ahead, we're going to be very vigilant this year, as we always are with recreational, recreational water illnesses. Cryptosporidium is a nasty bug, and we do everything we can to keep it out of the pool. We'll continue to work on increasing our revenue and reducing our costs. And lastly, I really want to take a moment to thank all the staff. I've got 90 lifeguards and concessionaires. I've got everyone from IS to, I better be careful what I say because I don't want to miss anybody, but there's a lot of people that are heavily involved in running this pool. I just get to be the one that gets to stand in front of you. But thanks to all the staff that made this just a great year, so. And with that, I'll turn it over to you guys to have any questions.
One thing I want to say, Eric, before I turn over to the council, is that one week that we stayed open later because of the schools being, having a late start, I had a lot of comment from folks out in the public that really appreciated that we did that.
Yeah. And so... We got a lot of good feedback from it as well.
Yeah, and so that was something I want to make sure that doesn't get by, because that was a big deal for, I think, the city and Parks and Rec and our pool and the staff as well.
It was, it was the whole department. I mean, Dwight really led it, the charge with us, but with, with us having the pool open, and Greg came up with a couple of programs, and we did the best we could out of a tough situation, so.
And the cooperation there was, that's a big deal, and as a community, that's the kind of cooperation we need to... kind of cooperation we need to work between whether it be the school district and the city or whatever, so that's a big deal for us.
It was nice having Dwight's leadership on that, too.
Absolutely. Kudos for that Dwight back there, sitting in the back. Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, Eric, do the scholarships count as part of the pool income?
No.
Okay, so that is broken out as far as...
I do not include them in the pool income, no.
Okay. Because that would, that would bring, you know, those dollars are there, of course, we subsidize them as well, but that would be still, change that net a little bit if it was included.
Yes, I've, yeah, we have not been given that direction, so I just, I tell you where we're at, and then that's on top of it, so. Thanks.
I wanted to echo the mayor's congratulations on having the pool open that extra time. I thought that was an excellent move on our part, and I'm wondering also if you had any opportunity to break out the impact of those extra five or six days on either income or revenue for this year?
Well, income and...
Or income or expenses for this year?
Expenses to staff the facility is about twenty-two hundred dollars a day. That's just, if I show up and everyone's there and we're busy, that's not actively management, that's just, if everyone's there the whole day, it's twenty-two hundred dollars a day to staff the facility. I did not, I can tell you how we did numbers-wise, we had about, on the warm days that was that week, we had about eight hundred people there a day. I did look at those numbers specifically. On the cooler days, it was down to three or four hundred people a day. I can't tell you off the top of my head how much of a breakdown it was, who were paying customers, and who were season pass people that had already paid, so I can't give you that. I could go get that information for you, but I don't have it on the top of my head right now. I think overall, you know, you're still heating and treating in the pool, you still have lifeguards there, we didn't have any swim lessons that week, so that didn't cost us anything extra, so I can't, I can't give you a dollar amount, but...
Right, so you don't, you don't know if it would have been like thirty thousand subsidy instead of a thirty-eight thousand or whatever that...
No, because I don't know, I mean, I can go back and pull it out, but I just haven't pulled that out, because I thought, we'll do the whole shoot and match, so.
Yeah, that's great, thanks.
John, I'll come to you next.
Yeah, Eric, I think you guys are doing a real good job there. I remember the last time I was on the council, this final net was between fifty-three and sixty thousand dollars, and you and the other people that you work with have reduced that down to thirty-eight, and you are recovering eighty-eight plus percentage of the amount of money that you spend. I think that's something to be congratulated for. City pools don't make money, but our city pool comes real close to breaking even, and every year, you seem to be getting a little bit closer. Congratulations, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Art?
Yeah, I think it's a first-class operation, a real asset to the city, and I'm glad we've got it, and you guys are doing a bang-up job running it, but because you're here, and I'm curious, and I don't know...
Great.
What are the criteria that go into a pool closure? Temperature and lightning and...
Okay, very good question. We do a temperature gauge is where we are at, and we do a hard number of sixty, and if it's not sixty, we just don't open. Typically, it'll be windy, it'll be cool, and anything below sixty, we get little blue people running around and chattering teeth, and it's just not a good thing. With lightning, if there is...
Oh, he's referring to BLC.
If there is lightning, we pull everyone out of the pool for thirty minutes after the last lightning strike that is seen. There are times when, by then, the pool usually clears out, and there's usually nobody there, and the times we'll reopen, we'll try to reopen, but as soon as we see lightning, we pull everyone out of the pool, and we do not let anyone back into the, into the water structure or the play area until thirty minutes after the last lightning strike. The nice thing is, we have a lifeguard that's up at the slide platform, so they have a better view, they can actually see a lot further, and so when we know there's storms rolling in, that's part of our active management, too. You know, if we know there's weather, we know what the weather's gonna do, we know where people are gonna be, we watch the weather system. My managers always have radar up, so they know when the systems are rolling in, and we can, we do a really good job of trying to actively manage the situation. If we know there's storms in the area, we'll also put a sign up in front of the facility to say, there are thunderstorms, to beware that there might be thunderstorms today, and this is the process that will happen, so that everyone's aware of it, and then they can make an informed decision whether they want to go in or not and do that.
Thanks.
Walter?
Eric, would you mind sending the council a copy of the PowerPoint presentation?
I do not mind at all.
Thank you. A question for you, the thirty-eight thousand, two sixty-eight, following up on John's comment about previous year losses, seems pretty low to me. Having not seen this earlier, can we presume that the lowest dollar amount that we had for a final net loss was the 2013, when we had ninety point seven percent recovery? Or does the percentage relate directly to the dollars?
Percentage rates directly to dollars.
Okay, so this is not our best year in terms of how well we've done?
Well, if you look at the map, or at the map, sorry, at the chart, it is the best year of our revenue. Over the last ten years, our revenue's gone up almost seventy thousand, or almost sixty thousand dollars. So it's going up as well, but also expenses are going up. I think a couple of years ago, when I came to council, I think we had a difference of twenty-three, twenty-four, that might have been in the first couple of years that I came in, and then, but we've had other years where it's sixty thousand dollars, and that's part of running a pool, we just didn't have as many people that year, so.
It's a really good number, considering the fact it appears to have been a pretty average year, with the exception of swimming lesson sales.
Right.
A question for Don Palmer, if I might. Don, following up on, I think it was Dan's question, should the scholarship monies that's buying passes and entry fees be part of this report's revenue?
No, because what we've got is, what we do now is, we got the scholarships into the general fund.
Correct.
And, and we try to track those separately from this, and this is, the scholarships... Do we do a transfer? I don't even remember if we do a transfer into the, into the pool, and I'm not sure that we did that, because I'll have to look at that, actually. I'll have to get back with you on that, because I think Sue and I talked about...
I would think you would do the transfer.
Soon I talked about that, so I think that was part of our discussion about doing that, so I'll have to go back and look.
Okay, if you'd get ahold of me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And if the answer to that is yes, then that would be part of this number.
Got that in?
That it would be in there.
We would then include it?
It would include it.
Other questions for Eric?
Continue.
To be continued, I'll be back next minute.
I guess we're done with the...
I mean, we accept the report?
Okay, Dan made the motion to move, Tom seconded it to accept the report. I'll start the roll, John.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Consider it accepted, Eric, and thank you for the wonderful report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, folks, we're moving on. Item number seven, we've got a public hearing on proposed adoption of 2012 International Residential Code, 2012 International Mechanical Code, 2012 International Fuel and Gas Code, 2012 International Energy Conservation Code, 2014 National Electrical Code, and 2009 Uniform Plumbing Code. And Mica, you have the full on the podium, sir, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, everyone for being here this evening. Before I get started, I just wanted to say thank you to Jill, unfortunately, I think she walked out, for the fair and affordable housing information. As the building official for the city, we get several calls about landlord-tenant disputes and issues with renters and leases, and some of the issues they have with their buildings, and we direct them to that landlord-tenant guideline that they produce as far as a guide to go through the dispute process. It's really efficient for us, because it frees up some of our time to do other things and to stay out of those civil disputes, so I just wanted to tell her thank you. Unfortunately, I think she already left, but getting on to the building codes. Building codes has a real long history. Most people don't know that their building codes dating back to King Hometabi in Babylonia in about three thousand B.C. They show a record that his was more of like an eye for an eye, or if a building collapsed and the homeowner lost an arm, then the builder had to lose an arm. And since we don't want to go that route, we look to adopt minimum standards that deal with fire and life safety. Some of the reasons we want to adopt these are because the primary concerns are the structural integrity and the fire and life safety for the community and the structures that they're in. Additionally, the codes deal with interior environment and in energy efficiency that are designed for health and affordability, and then the local amendments that we are allowed to provide allow for clarifications of purpose and to address certain local issues. Additionally, building codes directly affect property insurance rates, and the implementation of those codes can lower our overall property insurance rates for the city. Currently, the adopted codes by the city of Moscow include the 2012 additions of the building code and the existing building code, the 2009 residential code, energy code, fuel gas code, mechanical code, property maintenance code, and the 2003 uniform plumbing code, and the 2008 national electrical code. And we're looking to update this evening, six of those codes. The code process starts with the International Code Council, and it is taken up by partner members, including the city of Moscow, that provide input to the code development process and help with changes, and then the city is allowed to choose which codes to adopt and enforce, following what the state adopts and enforces. Under the state's requirements, once they adopt their amended codes, we're required to have a public hearing if we are to amend any of their adopted codes. Currently, this evening, we're looking to amend the 2009 uniform plumbing code, the 2014 national electrical code, the 2012 international mechanical code, and the 2012 international residential code. Providing these amendments, we go through a series of meetings that thoroughly discuss and review any significant changes to the construction codes. This is a committee that is based, excuse me, it's a consortium of community stakeholders that has input on the codes. This consortium is made up of building contractors, design professionals, building supply representatives, we also have a city council representative, and a few city staff members that make up this committee. The committee meets several times when codes are proposed to go over those recommended codes and then proposed changes, and sometimes we look at including or maintaining current practices, which we are doing on some of the codes at this point, and then all the compiled changes from the building code advisory committee and those from the state are proposed in our ordinance. So currently, we're looking at two amendments for the uniform plumbing code, nine amendments to the national electrical code, three amendments to the international mechanical code, and seven amendments to the international residential code. So overall, we'd have a total of twenty-four amendments over four of the six codes that we're proposing to adopt this evening. For that, our recommended action for the council is to conduct a public hearing, and after considering any testimony, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary, or you can take any other action that you deem appropriate. Any questions?
Okay, council questions for Mica before I open the public hearing? Okay, Mike, I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing now, and for anybody who would like to come up and speak and approve of these codes, please step forward, state your name, and what you'd like to chat about. Seeing nobody rush to the podium, I will ask for general or opposition to the code requests that we're trying to do, amendments. This is making it really easy on me. I see nobody coming up, so I'm going to close the public hearing. John?
I would say that we went over this at the administrative meeting, and we were very satisfied with the process, and we were satisfied with what the city wants to do as far as amending some of the codes. That being the case, I'd move that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
A second.
Okay, John made a motion to approve the ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary, seconded by Tom Lamar. Any discussion before I call for a roll?
Start with you, Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, we just adopted it, now we have an ordinance to talk about here. Okay, ordinance 2014 dash twenty, seventy. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter Two, Chapter Three, Chapter Four, Chapter Ten, Chapter Thirteen, and Chapter Sixteen, to include updates to the uniform and international codes, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Thank you, Mica.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to the next thing, which is assistance to the firefighters grant, and this is Brian Nickerson, Chief Nickerson, you've got the podium, sir. And this is not a taser or anything that shoots fireballs at you.
For the work. Thank you, Mayor and council. We want to talk just a minute. If I can find out where I'm at here. To the, in regards to the thermal imaging cameras and the grant. The grant is, I'll pass this around, so you can see how heavy and bulky and it gets kind of...
Battery's probably dead, too.
Sir, I made sure that they were charged. Thank you for your input. But the assistance to firefighters grant's been in place for many, many years, and it's a perfect opportunity for departments with, that have some challenges sometimes in purchasing items and so forth, and I met with the command staff in regards to what we would like to do with the grant this year, and it was a consensus basically on to try to replace these units, which are about thirteen years old, so what I wanted to do is show you a little video, it's about two minutes, a little over two minutes.
Chief, before you do that, is this the current or the proposed?
This is the current.
Okay.
This is the current, and then we'll go to the, we'll go to the other part. So kind of give you an overview of what it does.
Captain Russell Lee and his crews from Engine Thirty-Nine and Rescue Thirty-Nine pulled up to smoke coming out the windows of a duplex in Palm Springs, and pulled out the hose and the saw.
There was a pot and stove, there was a lot of smoke, you couldn't see anything, visibility was down to nothing.
Neighbors said no one was home, but they know you can never be too sure.
You know, in your mind, they tell you that they saw the people leave, that there was nobody home, so in your mind, you're thinking there's nobody home, but you can't take anything for granted.
The crews used a thermal imaging camera known as the TIC to find the fire in the kitchen and put it out, but then, during the search, they found something else, something unexpected.
We saw her through the TIC, and there's no mistaking it, when you see human body in the TIC, there's no mistaking it.
Captain Lee admits his heart was racing.
Absolutely. I mean, it would race whether it was an adult or not, but when it's kids, it's different, it's just different. So we have kids at home, so you can't help but keep them in the back of your mind, too.
The three-year-old girl was frightened and confused.
She was crying, coughing from the smoke, had no prob, she was, seemed very anxious to get out of there, she was actually sitting at the back door, which was deadbolted and locked, and she couldn't get out. When I reached down and picked her up, she came right to me. I was right behind her, so I got the little girl from...
I was right behind him, so I got the little girl from him, and immediately proceeded to just run outside.
Hey, man, be advised, we got a victim, we got a victim coming out.
All while firefighter Hammer found yet another child alone in the dark smoke.
We started looking around, I go in the first bedroom, and that's where I found the other girl.
They worked quickly.
I picked her up, she grabbed onto me. Whoever it is, whether it's a little girl or anybody, just trying to get them outside safely, quickly, so they can have the best chance of survival.
The crew kept searching, expecting to find an adult somewhere, but sadly.
We went through that house back and forth and back and forth, looking for the mother, and couldn't find her.
Okay, we're going to put this on your finger, it's not going to hurt at all, okay?
They eventually learned the children had been left home alone. The mother later arrested, the children treated by rescue crews. The children's only chance for survival that night, the crew that found them before it was too late.
That kind of gives you an example of what we can utilize a TIC for, but there's other uses, there's other uses as well. Benefits of a TIC, it's an integral and vital tool for the fire service, it's been around for, you know, 15, 20 years. Technology's advanced. Like I said a while ago, this is a unit that's 13 years old, it's very bulky. The new brands will probably be about half of that, roughly. In regards to the technology part, there's multitudes of different vendors out there with some different possibilities. There's a wireless interface that interfaces with the TIC camera to a vehicle with a monitor on it. There's a recording, there's a snapshot of a picture, so the incident commander can actually see what's going on inside as well, if we have the wireless capability. Right now, the vehicle charging capable, we don't even, we don't have that capability. So with the new units, we're going to look at putting them on the engines and actually having them charged and ready, rather than relying on someone to actually take them out and charge them. It's not something that is the best practice, but does it work for us now? Yes, it can be improved by having chargers and having them ready all the time. These units provide not only safety for our personnel, but for the citizens that we serve. Like you see in the video, that's one of the reasons why we take it in on initial attack on any fire, is to be able to search. So if somebody doesn't know somebody's in there, you always assume that somebody's probably in there, especially with cars in the driveways and so forth. You can see when you pass it around, it does enhance the visibility and smoke conditions and so forth. The technology today, the screen, is much more clear, much more defined color-wise and image-wise. It assists in searching the building, obviously, for occupants. So like you see in the video, that's kind of what you use for, along with some other things we'll get to in a second. The reason why we're looking for probably four or five, right now, we have two. One's carried on one of the battalion units, the battalion unit, and the other's carried in the fire marshal's truck right now. We want to look at deploying these on the engines, so they're available at a moment's notice, as soon as they pull up. That's one of the tools that they take off with them, so they're more readily available. It also assists in searching for hidden fires. It's one of the biggest advantages that there is to this after we've done a search or after we've, you know, think we've extinguished the fires, to find the hidden fires, so we don't have to go back four hours later to a larger incident. And plus, it assists in navigating through a building. You know, some of these places around that have very challenging corridors and hallways and doors, so it kind of helps us do that. Provides for the location of a hose stream. The guys are trained not to go in and just spray smoke. You don't spray water on smoke, that's not what, that's not what we're for. We're find the glow and put water, the adage is, put the wet stuff on the red stuff. That's the adage. So this helps us find that, the seat of the fire, and then extinguish it promptly, and then move on to find any hidden fires. It increases the efficiency on the fire ground. We could do a search probably in half the time with one of the TIC cameras, just because we don't have to go strictly by feel. Otherwise, you're curling around in the dark, the smoke, on your hands and knees, you know, 50 pounds of equipment, and it just, it takes a while to do that. So this helps that ability to see farther, see more clear, to see what's around us. Also, it helps, and this is one of the other big advantages, is minimize the water damage. Again, we don't go in and spray smoke. We go in and find the seat of the fire, and try to limit what, the amount of water we use to eliminate, to eliminate overuse of water if we don't have to. So we're looking at, like I said, we're looking at $70,000 grant through the AFG, which is a 10% match, which is $7,000, which I think we have in our budget as far as the capital improvement. So we're asking for, not necessarily the amount, but the money, so that way we can do some trials for three or four vendors and pick out what's best and suited for us, and then get as many as we can for $70,000. So I'm going to assume that we'll probably get at least three to four at least, and then anything else would be a bonus on top of that, so.
Okay. Tom's got one. Tom?
Assuming you get funded, what are you planning on doing with the existing TICs? Do you continue to use them, or?
We haven't decided yet. I think Chief Duke has, wants dibs on them, I think. Which, again, I mean, it's another tool that law enforcement can use, too. That's one of the other advantages, they can use it for a search, a search of a building and see what's on the other side of that wall possibly, and, you know, creates a safer environment for everybody. So we haven't really talked about that.
John?
The chief brought this to the administrative committee, and it got thumbs up from all three of us, and we're totally in favor of what he's trying to do and what the fire department's trying to do.
Yeah.
Well, I'd just say, you know, with, having experience with it, that, you know, that we have them in the command vehicles, it'd be nice to have the more of them, to have them on the initial attack engines for the crews that get there on scene. You know, right now, they're, like Chief says, they're doing the, basically a blind search in the smoke, and if they could have this to, you know, pinpoint things a little quicker, not that we don't do a pretty good job of getting to it right now, but this would just get that much quicker and hopefully that much less water damage in the future, so, which is a service to our citizens out there as well.
Tom?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the Moscow Fire Department to apply for assistance to the firefighter grant funding to purchase thermal imaging cameras in the amount, not to exceed $70,000.
I'd second that. Thank you, John.
Okay, we've got a motion by Tom and a second by Art to approve the Moscow Fire Department to apply for assistance to firefighters grant funding to purchase thermal imaging cameras in an amount not to exceed $70,000. I will take the roll from John.
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, Chief, you're in good shape there.
Thank you.
Move right on to the next thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Nickerson.
Okay, up next, we have the Sixth Street Right-Away Acquisition. Leslie Donald will be the presenter, unless you have the podium.
Good day, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that we've talked about a couple of times at the Public Works Finance Committee, as I recall, has not come to the full council, so I think it will be new to some of you, may not have heard that. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the background as to what the situation is that we're trying to address with this proposal, and then carry it forward to the current alternative that is being suggested for consideration by the city council. So to start with, the area we're looking at is the intersection of Sixth and Jackson Street. Of course, Jackson running north-south here, State Highway 8, US 95, southbound, and then Sixth Street running east-west. This is the URA property, that's part of the legacy crossing, urban renewal area. This parking lot is becoming the new Jimmy John's restaurant that's currently under construction. So the item of concern here has to do with the configuration of the intersection, primarily in the east-west direction. And the issue that we have existing today is that the eastbound through lane, so this lane here, is directly opposite of the westbound left-turn lane. That is an unusual situation and one that as a traffic designer, roadway designer, you do not want to have. It leads to a lot of potential for conflict in vehicles traveling in opposing directions. Part of that can occur just from a vehicle here working its way across, while the one that also has a green light heading westbound sneaks out a little ways into the intersection in preparation of making a left-hand turn. That transition across that short distance of an east-west crossing the intersection is just too short to make a reasonable transition through there. The other components of the intersection that add to the conflicts are that we have a right-turn lane, which creates a right-turn, that in itself is okay. There's also then, as I was saying, the eastbound traffic that has to transition, in essence, a full lane width, which is roughly 12 feet, as they're crossing a three-lane roadway section. And you can see how that puts them in close proximity to anybody coming westbound to make a left-hand turn. And then amidst of all that, we have a bicycle lane that's also making a similar transition as the eastbound vehicles. The reason that that becomes even more complicated in this process is there is a tendency for some of these vehicles that are heading east and turning south to want to get into this far lane. Now, the traffic codes say you are supposed to turn into the near lane on a one-way road, but as we know, a lot of people in practice don't necessarily do that, so they swing all the way out into this far lane, which means they're traversing some of that bicycle, what would be the bicycle lane, in the process of making that corner. So it creates a pinch point right in here, where bicycles, in essence, are squeezed between vehicles that are making a right-hand turn lane and vehicles that are trying to make a quick transition from this spot on the roadway to this spot on the roadway, all the while avoiding potential left-turn conflict, traffic coming in the other direction. So I'm sure it's just a bit of a mess. We'd like to resolve some of that and clean this up so that we don't have as many potential conflicts at this location. So along that line, we've looked at a couple of possibilities on how to get there, and we started this actually some time ago, and then brought forward to the committee to consider back in about July of this year, starting with two alternatives. And this one is one we've called Alternative 1. It was the one that, at the time, was preferred by staff and suggested as the one that we would like to pursue, and I'll take you through some of the reasons for that. The concept here is that the eastbound lane would transition as you approach the intersection of Jackson Street. You can see here, this hatched area represents the offset of that existing roadway to the south, which then allows it to, through a continuation of the transition, line up better with the continuation of the eastbound lane as you head east of Sixth Street, and avoid the conflict with that left-turning pocket coming westbound. Along with that, of course, the bicycle lane would follow the same transition, you can see how well it lines up across here. And then the right-hand left-turn lane was shifted quite a way south. And the reason for that was because this star right here represents the location of the existing traffic signal pole. And we were hoping to avoid having to move that pole, because that adds a significant cost and complication to the project. So this particular Alternative 1 included a traffic island dislocation, and within that island would be the traffic signal pole and potentially the power pole that's also located just next to the signal pole. This one requires the largest area of right-ofway that we'd have to acquire from the parcel to the south, which belongs to the URA. It's about 30,000, or 3,060 feet, roughly. Does create probably the best traffic flow in terms of lining things up. The, and just a quick, a couple of images here of how that traffic movement flows better as you work your way through this type of alignment, fewer conflicts. The second alternative did not use the island, so you see the island's gone away here, and essentially just shifted the three lanes to the south, so through lane, bicycle lane, and right-turn lane, an equal distance, requires a relocation of that signal to a new location somewhere in here behind the sidewalk, so there's an added cost to the project if we do this. But the right-ofway need goes down as far as the area, so that's an advantage. The travel lanes and the flow of traffic through the intersection for the vehicles are still good. The bicycles certainly is much improved, and we're less likely to see the conflict and squeeze happening here, even with vehicles perhaps that are swinging further out than they should, just because the angle here is reduced quite a bit. So those are the options that were brought forward to the committee back in July. They were also, I believe, presented at one point to the URA board, met with kind of a lukewarm reception, if you will. So we thought, well, okay, let's look a little further into this and see if we can come up with some better options. So this is option, alternative number three, we're calling it, the new version, if you will, and it's a little bit different drawing. So the concept here is that we would still shift these three lanes to the south, similar to Alternative 2, but not go as far. So instead of shifting the lanes 10 or 12 feet to the south, we're only shifting them five or six feet to the south. So essentially, a half lane width shift to the south. Now, that still leaves a little bit of the lane offset with a little bit of the lane for the left turn heading westbound, but the transition is much more gentle, and actually falls within the parameters that are established through the design guidelines that we use for designing roadway systems. So for this speed of roadway, that amount of horizontal transition as you cross an intersection is, falls within those requirements and guidelines, so that's an acceptable alignment. So this would, in essence, kind of meet us halfway, give us an improved traffic flow from west to east, reduce the conflict potential between the opposing directions of traffic, also improve the situation with the flow, I'll zoom in a little bit, the flow of traffic for the bicycles and the turning movement, again, represented here by the green bicycle lane and the right-turn lane. Because the angle here is reduced, the transition is not as sharp across the intersection, the vehicles are not as likely to swerve as, you know, rapidly to the right as they were, as they are today. And so we believe that would reduce the potential for conflict for the vehicles and the bicycles, and then certainly reduce that conflict with the opposing left-turn lane. Does it void it entirely? No, it does not, but I think it's certainly an improved situation, and one that we believe would make it a better intersection for all modes of traffic that are passing through. Also, in this configuration, we've kept the curb line at such a location that we should be able to keep the traffic signal pole in its current location. So that brings, keeps the cost down, we don't have to relocate the traffic signal pole. The power pole that's there either would remain, or potentially, if the URA pursues taking the power underground, it could potentially go away. In either case, we could leave the traffic signal pole where it is, work the curb line around it as it exists. We would change the crosswalk configurations a little bit to a double crosswalk on either side of that pole, working their way north-south and east-west. This one also includes a little different perspective on the sidewalk. Previous examples had a five-foot wide walk, this example has a 10-foot wide sidewalk, which is in keeping with the theme that we've established in this area, so what we've done on College Street, what we've done on Jackson to the north of this site, in front of the EMSI building, or attempting to do on Jackson in front of the Jimmy John's site. So it is a little different in that perspective. Because of that, the right-ofway, it falls in between the other two alternatives. So in summary, these were the three alternatives we looked at. Number one, with the traffic islands initially, a little over 3,000 square feet of area that would be required to be obtained from the URA. Does not relocate the pole, but has a five-foot sidewalk. Option two, the smallest of the area needs, does require the pole relocation, so higher cost attached to that. Again, the five-foot walk, neither of those meet what is now our current approach for sidewalks in this area. And then number three, which is our new preferred alternative from the staff perspective, right-of- right-of-way needs just a little under 2,400 square feet, does not require a pole relocation, and does include a 10-foot wide sidewalk. Now, this third concept was presented to the board of the renewal agency. It has met with some favor, is my understanding. And so we are here today to ask that the council provide us your thoughts on whether or not this is something that we should be pursuing with the Urban Renewal Agency in terms of acquiring right-of-way, and then ultimately moving this on to a project that would construct the improvements as we've proposed them to be.
Dan?
Les, in committee, if I remember right, wasn't this intersection, doesn't it have the highest crash data in the city according to ITD?
That is what I reported at the committee meeting. We just received some updates to that data. This one is actually now number four within the city. There are, the highest one's actually now out at Perimeter Drive.
Oh, really?
And State Highway Eight, and then Third and Jackson, Third and Washington, I believe in that order, and this intersection now is Sixth and Jackson.
Still top five, though.
Still top five.
Tom?
I was on the Urban Renewal Agency when the first two proposals were presented, and I'm much happier about this third proposal, so that seems consistent with my perception of those different proposals and how it'd fit in with our intended use or the URA's intended use for that property.
Well, and I think, I agree. I think this particular option, particularly with the frontage improvements that now is shown, certainly meets more of the intent of what that development of that property may be. I think that it just, in general, is a better fix for a lot of situations and fits better with all the different competing interests that are occurring in that area.
And as a bicycle user in that intersection, it seems like it would work well there, too.
Are you?
Yeah, I was going to paraphrase a little bit from the URA board, and Gary can ring me back if I go astray here, but the URA board was quite in favor of option number three and were very willing to negotiate with the city over the parameters of the need for land and kind of shared interests that can be covered both, and were even willing to discuss the issue of foregoing payment in terms of improvements to the street frontages through there in sort of a barter system. So the URA board was quite in favor of option number three because option number one, with the traffic island out front, blocks the entire use of that welcoming parcel to the whole legacy crossing area, and so the traffic island was to be discouraged substantially. And number two seemed to be tight. Number three seems to be the Goldilocks moment on this one and really seems to serve a lot of needs simultaneously.
Gary, you've been doing the presentations with the URA board. Do you have anything you'd like to add above what Art said?
I think Art did a great job of paraphrasing what feeling the board is. The URA has indicated they're quite willing to discuss with the city to try and make that a safer intersection and move ahead with the plans for legacy crossing as well as the legacy crossing overlay zone and get that area of the city developed in the way that was intended. So look forward to sitting down and working out a deal with the city.
So the action that the council takes is they're not really approving anything, it's just a willingness to cooperate in conjunction with, meeting with the URA and...
Yeah, if I may. The purpose of the discussion is to determine whether or not City Council wants to proceed. If you do want to proceed, then we'll set up a meeting with the URA and the city to talk about exactly what it means to both entities and look at alternatives. If it's not a cost per square foot, then if there's an opportunity for some joint development, something like that, certainly explore all of those options. And the URA, as the landowner in the city, will have to come to some sort of an agreement at some point.
Okay. Walter?
In advance, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we endorse alternative number three as presented tonight and indicate our interest in pursuing negotiations with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency to acquire additional right-of-way on Sixth Street at this intersection.
Second.
Okay, Walter made a motion to accept number three that Les presented. John, second the motion to be in talks, negotiations with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency to acquire additional right-of-way on Sixth Street for the third alternative alignment. Everybody clear with that? We'll start with a roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move forward with it. Thank you very much, Les. Okay. My voice is hanging in there, not completely silent yet.
Just barely.
Item number 10, amendment to the vending ordinance. Rod Hall, sir, you have got the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to introduce an amendment to the vending ordinance. Under Moscow's city ordinance that regulates street vendors, food trucks, what we call the mobile vending units, are not specifically permitted in the city. This proposed amendment would specifically allow mobile vending units, under specific requirements and limits set out in this ordinance, to operate in the city of Moscow. Additionally, in this, also this amendment to the vending ordinance, some sidewalk vendors have been asking to be able to operate in a little larger space than what is currently allowed. And so with this amendment would allow or would permit the expanded size of operations for sidewalk vending units, this proposed amendment would allow vendors of several more feet for the operations, but would still make sure that there's unpeated pedestrian traffic so that they're allowed to move freely on the city sidewalks. And if the council approves the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance, then would ask that you adopt a city policy. Currently, the guidelines for vendors are spelled out in Moscow's Resolution Number 2004-08. Staff believes that putting the guidelines in a city policy will be more customer-friendly and easier to find and follow. The vendor policy would be given to any applicant for a vendor license at the time that they apply, and that way they'd be informed of all the requirements that they would need to follow in their operations. This was reviewed and recommended for approval. There were some minor changes to it when we discussed it last week at the administrative committee meeting. Basically, the only difference from last week to today is there was some suggestions in the definitions to clarify, instead of just portable vending and mobile vending, to call on a sidewalk vendor and a mobile vending unit, what would be the food trucks.
Okay. Discussion amongst the council.
I'll have a go. I'm generally in favor of this, but I wanted to bring up a note from our absent Wayne Kraus here, where he had received some comment from members of the public and sent us all an email relative to that, and I wanted to bring up what he had to say and the concerns of the residents of downtown concerning the fact that there are at least 150 people downtown in second-floor apartments, and they are worried about the noise up to 3:00 AM generated by the mobile catering vans that might be parked in close proximity to their sleeping quarters, and wondered if there might be something, a mechanism to deal with that should noise become an issue with people sleeping during the night. The other issue they brought up was that of litter, and while the vendors are responsible for the areas, there seems to be difficulty in the vendors actually following up and making sure the area is well cleaned up afterwards. So I am bringing this up on behalf of the citizen who wrote to Wayne, who copied us on that, and wondered if there were any thoughts on how to deal with those issues.
Thank you. Currently, those issues are addressed at the time of the application. The city clerk reminds them of their time that they can operate, that there is a noise ordinance, that if they are complaints, those permits can be taken down. If there's issues with the litter, those would be kind of complaint-driven. If we find out about that, then we would look into enforcement to make sure that issue is taken care of. So currently, right now, I think the concerns that were addressed in the email are already being addressed. We've had some food trucks that have operated downtown for probably a little over a year, and we haven't had really any complaints. And they're reminded specifically at the time when they get their permit.
Walter?
Rod, I believe I was the one that brought up the question terminology about what to call these two different operations, and now I'm going to throw you a third-strike curveball, I guess. Is there any place where what you're now calling the sidewalk vending unit could or would be operated when it was not on a sidewalk?
There might be some right-of-ways where that they could. I know we specifically addressed that food trucks couldn't be operating on a sidewalk, but if there's someplace in the city where there's not a sidewalk, as long as they're in the right-of-way enough, I believe that they would. But currently, we don't have anybody operating there.
Tom?
Actually, recently, I've been seeing somebody setting up a grill underneath a tent in an alleyway in downtown Moscow, and I don't know what it is, but every once in a while, they set up a grill in an alleyway, and it looks like they're supplying a business, perhaps. So I don't know what that is.
Yeah, in conversation with Stephanie, we don't currently license anyone to operate in a street that's open for traffic, if it's closed off, blocked off, and an alley would be included in that as well. So it would have to be closed through traffic.
I've heard about what Tom's talking about, and I don't believe the alley is, and I don't remember the business.
I went by it.
I don't remember the business.
I don't remember the business either, I just saw it.
They wouldn't be permitted to operate in the alley.
Yeah, if I may. It probably just requires the police to be educated that if that's a situation, to stop, because I'm assuming this happened after business hours, after 5:00 at night.
Yeah, probably.
Okay. So the police probably just need to be reminded that they should stop and ask for permits if they're operating in those.
Not to belabor this, but I think, Tom, what I heard was it wasn't that they were cooking and selling, it was more like an outdoor grill kind of situation, maybe.
I don't know, it looked like fun, I wanted to stop by. I didn't.
Just in case.
I do have a question about the parking piece for the mobile vending units. I was a little, maybe I'm misunderstanding what the intent is here, but it talked about we're allowing them between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM, but they're not supposed to park in that spot before? And I think it's an attempt to try to not save a spot.
That's exactly what it is.
Is what the intent is. And then they're not supposed to be in another place, they're not supposed to be on the right-of-way. I'm trying to figure out what that person's supposed to do with their vehicle if they're not, if they're not, are they supposed to just drive around until 9:00, or can they park somewhere? I was not sure if somebody was going to take a literal translation of what's in here and not feel like they could park anywhere in a right-of-way in Moscow until they're actually selling between 9:00 and 3:00. That's what I was going for.
Tom, if you'll, I think I see the answer in Section 1113D. It talks about not parking somewhere when you intend to use that spot to vend.
So you thought somewhere else.
Apparently, you could park somewhere else so that you were downtown and then move to that spot.
Correct. Is the way I read it.
Yeah, that's how, that's how it was written.
You can't move, you can't go into that spot until 9:00.
Exactly. And you can't, and you can't park another vehicle in there.
To save.
Yeah, to save it, so you pull it out and drive in another one.
Should we allow somebody to move into a spot with some period of time in advance of, if they're going to start selling tacos at 9:00, but they need a half an hour to prep, would it be okay for them to be there at 8:30? You know what I mean? I'm trying to figure out what's a reasonable thing to, I mean, the business has some business practice that we don't necessarily know the details of.
John?
That'd be part of the operations.
I think that one of the things that we talked about, I know one of the things that we talked about, was protecting the brick-and-mortar businesses. And the earlier we let people set up, the less protection the people that have gone to the time expense to put up a building, rent a building, lease a building, and operate a brick-and-mortar restaurant, they will be affected or could possibly be affected. So...
So 9:00 is good, then?
9:00.
Okay.
Most everybody is done eating by 9:00 or are close to being done, having eaten downtown at many different times. I think if we leave it at 9:00 and don't allow you to put your vehicle in there before 9:00, giving you an opportunity and we've protected the brick-and-mortar businesses.
Okay. Sounds reasonable to me.
Wait. Is this a public hearing?
No.
Nope. It's not a public hearing, so...
Well, in that case, I would move approval of the ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, Art made a motion, followed by Tom, second, for the amendment to the vending ordinance, to approve this ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that it be read entitled by published and by summary. John, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay. Five oh, so that ordinance is 2014-21, staff. Okay, ordinance number 2014-21, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of the Moscow City Code, Title IX, Chapter 11, to allow mobile vending units to operate within the city and expand the size of the portable vending units operation, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, with that, we will move on to the next...
There's one more piece to that. It's the policy, to adopt the policy that was spelled out in the prior resolution.
Oh, if the ordinance is approved.
Basically, they had language in that, it was...
Approve the related vending policy to take, okay.
Moved over from what the language that was in the resolution, we just believe that this would be easier for people to follow and find.
Dan?
Then I'll make a motion that we accept the City of Moscow policy on licensed vendors.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan, the second by John, to approve the ordinance. How'd you read that?
Policy. The City of Moscow policy on licensed vendors.
Okay, everybody got that?
Yep.
We'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, that one is done. Now, we are going to move on to the next item, which is the amendment to the taxi ordinance. And Rod, you have the podium. Sir, on this one as well.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the City of Moscow and its operations understands the concerns and necessity of protecting the environment. Moscow encourages its citizens and businesses to be aware of our shared environment and to take steps to mitigate any detrimental consequences from actions that affect the environment. Moscow looks for ways to allow opportunities in further pursuit of sustainable environmental business practices within the city. Under Moscow, the current Moscow City Code, only taxicabs are specifically allowed to operate within the city. Staff has been approached this last, in the last summer, about allowing alternative means for paid transportation within the city, specifically somebody wanted to operate a pedicab. Many cities in the state of Idaho allow taxi, or allow and license pedicabs, and we believe that that trend will continue to grow. The proposed amendment to the Moscow taxicab ordinance will help ensure public safety in the operations of non-motorized vehicles using city streets for alternative paid transportation. In order to maintain public health and safety concerns, staff believes that every operator of paid transportation operating within the city and using city streets should be licensed. This action was used, or was reviewed and recommended for approval by the administrative committee on the November 24th.
Okay.
No.
John?
We went through this, and we did, as a committee, vote for its approval, and the other thing that this will do is if we do pass this and we have pedicabs in the city, they will have to meet the same insurance and licensing regulations that taxicabs. taxi cabs do. And is that not correct, Rod?
Yeah, it'd be a lower threshold for pedicabs for.
Absolutely.
But it still would be required to be insured to protect the city and its citizens.
So I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, Walter?
Rod, a question on the definition of pedicab. Your first sentence says, "Is any human-powered vehicle that is able to be pedaled without any motor assistance used for the purpose of transporting persons." And then you go on in the next sentence to talk about having an assistive motor. Those, those two are not in conflict?
No. Actually, the, the unit would have to be able to operate under a human-powered pedaling.
Totally.
Totally. Without the operation of the motor. But in there, there's an operator, or an option for somebody to put a little motor, assist motor on their pedicab, but it could not be the main mode of power for that vehicle.
Thank you.
Art?
Follow-up on that. It looks like there might be one word too many in there because it says, "Any human-powered vehicle that is able to be pedaled without any motor assistance used for the purpose of transporting persons." And then it says, "A motor vehicle may be permitted." Perhaps you mean just a motor may be permitted.
I think that's a good catch. I, I think we could strike that out.
Delete the word vehicle.
That would make sense.
Yep. Recognize that in the motion.
That would be a Scrivener's change.
Scrivener's change, yeah.
It doesn't need a separate motion.
Not minor.
Okay. Other questions before I take a roll for this? What we've got is John made a motion, Tom seconded a motion to the amendment of the taxi ordinance, approving this ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings that it be read entitled and published by summary. Art, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay. Five-O, thank you very much, Rod.
Thank you.
Let's see. This is ordinance 2014-22. Stephanie, did we get everything okay over there? Okay. Ordinance 2014-22, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of the Moscow City Code Title IX, Chapter Five, to add pedicabs and carriages as options for public transportation in the city of Moscow, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. We're getting to the new one here, folks, I guess. What we've got left is reports, I think. Okay, reports. And I will start with Walter.
Thank you, sir. The Public Works Finance Committee on the 24th, and every action item that we had on agenda was on tonight's consent or regular agenda and has been handled. We had two reports at the Public Works Finance Committee. One on the water conservation plan status from Nicole Baker, where she indicated it was currently before the Sustainable Environment Committee for review, and would be coming forward to committee shortly, Gary?
Yes, sir. Soon as we get a review and recommendations back.
Okay. Which is anticipated.
I anticipate it will come to committee, probably, perhaps the first meeting in January.
And then Les McDonald reported that he and Rod Hall were working their way through the southeast Moscow sewer district contract that has been, we asked staff to take a look at possibility of absorbing that district's infrastructure. And they're looking into the legality, I presume, since the attorney is on the list, and the practicality of it by the Engineering Department. And that, too, will be coming to committee when they're ready.
Yes, if I can comment on that. It is, when you have a government dissolved and another government exercising extrajurisdictional services, it's fairly complex, and there are specific laws that you have to follow in order to do that. So wanted to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Okay. And additionally, Mr. Mayor, during the past week, on the 20th, we had the PIBAC meeting, Police Basin and Aquifer Committee meeting. And then we're able to get it finished a little early so that myself, Les McDonald, Mark Workman, the city supervisor of the city of Pullman, and Steve Rubashon, the executive director of PIBAC, could go over to Dr. McGuyver's office, who is the U of I executive VP for the research side, where we met also with the Det Washington State University Executive Vice President for Research and two of his people to talk about what those research entities could do in terms of assisting PIBAC, what PIBAC could do to assist them in terms of grant funding or possibly funding graduate students to do research on items of interest to PIBAC. So that will be, it was a very good, just an hour meeting, but very good that we have a plan and a program. And Steve Rubashon is following up to see about having somebody come in January from WSU to talk about doing some collaboration and possibly a workshop that will look at research possibilities. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Walter. Art?
Yeah, I had a couple. One was the Urban Renewal Agency, and we went over a fair bit of that already tonight about the realignment of the Sixton-Jackson intersection. Also discussed was the release of a request for proposals for people who would want to purchase that lot on the corner and then proceed to develop it. And so that was a request for proposal that is going out here pretty quick.
Actually, it was sent out last Wednesday and published in the paper tomorrow, or this Wednesday.
Yep. So that's gone out, and we hope to get some applicants looking at that property seriously to acquire it and develop it. Also, in association with that, was URA activities involving the placement of overhead utilities underground and the completion of the brownfields cleanup on the site. All of that should be coming to a conclusion right about the time that the RFPs are ready to go and construction is ready to begin, so that could become a very busy site very quickly as we get into midsummer and beyond, I hope, with some development of the first step of legacy crossing. Did I miss anything?
No, sir. You've done another excellent job.
So with the Sustainable Environment Commission, they've been working with Professor Miller at the University of Idaho Law School down in Boise about greening up aspects of the city codes. But given that it would be sort of a free project undertaken by the law students as pro bono work down there, they decided to narrow down their list of wants and narrow it down to one thing called a PACE grant, otherwise known as kind of a green LID, where citizens who could not otherwise afford or justify energy-saving or co-energy production on their house could get a community-based loan, put on solar cells, things like that onto their home, but then have the cost of that ride with the residents. So sort of like an LID, but for green uses, to proceed along with the property. That way, it could be amortized out longer, and people wouldn't have to pay, say, a full $20,000. It could go with the house into the future as part of a low-interest loan. So PACE loans are available, but they haven't been used in Idaho, and that would require some work with the legislature to get those going. So this law school is going to look at what it would take to enable that to occur and also hopefully bring in some other municipalities who might also be equally interested in allowing this type of development. So they're pursuing that a bit. They also heard from Nicole Baker on the current updates to the water conservation plan, and the SEC will be looking at that plan and providing feedback in time for Nicole to incorporate the edits into the final product that will be coming to this body early in the spring and seeking to find budgets as way to help with the water conservation plan, like a toilet rebate program, things like that. So that's what's been going on there. Paradise Path Task Force met, but I wasn't there.
Okay. Very good. Dan?
The only meeting I had was with the Arts Commission, and they did a little overview of the, you know, they're not the Farmers Market Commission, but they still like to know what goes on there. And talked a little bit about how the alcohol sales at the market went, and that they've been working on the Public Art Master Plan. They move, are moving the plain air from spring to fall to maybe get some different scenery in the, the pictures that come from that. And then the big thing is the 30-30-30 sale this Friday, December 5th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I guess I get to ring the bell at 4:05.
Nice.
Get that started.
Very good. Tom?
Well, actually, I was, I missed the Administrative Committee this week, or this last week, as I was back east helping my parents move. And none of my committees met. So I'm, I have no reports at this time.
Okay. Very good. John?
The Administrative Committee did meet, and all of the things that were discussed on that agenda were dealt with in tonight's meeting. The only other report I have is the Human Rights Commission and the Human Rights Task Force. We received a $3,000 grant for advertising for the MLK Martin Luther King Breakfast. There was some discussion about whether or not the Sheringa Motorhome Park will close, and if it does, where the people can live, even though that is something that is out in the county, it's not here in Moscow. And there's going to be a social justice forum on December 11th at 7:00 p.m. at the 1912 Building, and that's going to discuss the issues at Ferguson. And then, "The coming face to face with hate is search for a world without hate." There have been one problem after another as far as getting a program set up for the University of Idaho and the Moscow High School. And so at this point, trying to do it next year, first part of next year, on the same day. And maybe they'll be able to get it taken care of then. And then there's going to be a new human rights brochure and poster. And some students at the University of Idaho have done some real good design work, some catchy stuff that catches the eye and gets the message across. So that is all I have.
Okay. November 19th, I attended airport board meeting, and we're moving along, plugging away with the issues with the airport. December 4th and 5th, I'll be down in Boise for AIC meetings, which I'm very much looking forward to, and I'll report back to council at our next meeting. Came off on those meetings. It should be very, very good. And just a reminder for council, on December 3rd, we got the city, county, and U of I breakfast, and we'll have it, Wal's complex, so. All right, before I turn it over to Gary, I just want to thank Ben. He hung in all the way to the end of the reports. He's a good commission guy. I can see that right now, to hang in there through all of this. Thank you very much, Ben.
The other lady got 90%.
She got all the way until the reports, and she thought, okay, enough's enough. So that Kristen hung in there, too. Thanks again, Ben. Gary?
Don't really have a lot. We did, I did attend the airport board distribution, I guess, pre-bid meeting or pre-RFP meeting at the airport on Wednesday, the 19th as well. So there were five or six engineering firms that were there. So I imagine they'll all be responding to the RFP, and we'll, hopefully, we'll get some good proposals.
With that, I would entertain a motion for folks.
Consider yourself entertained.
Second. All in favor? Aye. O's? This meeting is adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.